I have 6:30, are they on?
Yeah. Are we good to go?
I don't have 6:30 yet.
Right. Hello, everyone, good evening. My name is Jack Courier. This is the zoning board of adjustment. We get going at 6:30 and my cellphone has 6:30, so we'll get underway. First, if you do have a cellphone, if I could ask you to please silence it or put it on mute mode, so it doesn't disrupt the meeting. I serve as the chair of the zoning board. To my right is Mary Ellen McKay. We all live in Nashua. She serves as our clerk. And we have Mr. JP P. J. walking in now, so we have three folks here, so we'll proceed. We are anticipating Ms. Vitale, who's an alternate member, will probably be here later this evening around 7:00. So, in the meantime, there's three of us here, which is enough for a quorum in the city of Nashua. So, we'll be underway on tonight's agenda. If you don't have it already, tonight's agenda is on that wooden table over there to your left. Feel free to grab a copy, so you can see where your case is on the agenda. We'll be following that order tonight. And before we get going, I'll just go through briefly our bylaws and what we're here for. We're here tonight to hear both variances and special exceptions. And for those who may not be familiar with that, those are deviations from this Nashua Book of Code, which has been latest revised in 2012. And basically, zoning disputes are rather common. So, in New Hampshire and actually other states, they've established zoning board of adjustments to try to resolve issues on zoning before they need to reach the court level. By state law, there needs to be three or more affirmative votes for either a variance or a special exception. And there's a slight difference between a variance and a special exception, so I'll briefly go through what those differences are. A variance, like I mentioned, is a deviation in code from this book. And the five criteria is, number one, that the variance will not be contrary to the public interest; number two, that the spirit of the ordinance is observed; number three is that substantial justice is done; number four is that the values of surrounding properties are not diminished; and number five is that literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. That's the five criteria for a variance. For a special exception, the criteria is a little different. Number one, there's five total. Number one is that the use must be listed in the table of uses. So, there's a table of special exceptions which are permitted. And the special exceptions we have before us tonight all meet that. They are in this book already. Number two is that traffic, the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Number three, again, for a special exception, is that the requested use or activity will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system or any other municipal system. Number four is that any special exception regulations for the use activity set forth in other sections of the zoning ordinance are fulfilled. That comes into play particularly, say, if there's wetlands or in-law apartments. And number five is that the requested use or activity will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the district or the immediate neighborhood. So, we buy our bylaws. The way we hear each case, there's two components to each case. First, there's the public, the public meeting, where we hear from you. We are here to hear what you have to say. That's the public meeting component of it. When that concludes, it's in a public hearing, where the three of us, maybe the four of us, if Ms. Vitale makes it here, will adjudicate on the issue and likely come to a conclusion. The way the public meeting works is that the applicant will speak first, and the applicant has up to 15 minutes to present their case. Don't have to take up to 15 minutes, but that's your right to do so. There's a clock here that'll tick down. It'll start at 15, and it'll be green also from 15 down to when there's one minute left, it'll go to yellow, and at the end of 15 minutes, it'll go to red. So, again, the applicant will speak first for their case with up to 15 minutes. After the applicant has completed their testimony, anybody else speaking in favor will have up to five minutes to present their testimony. When all affirmative testimony is heard, then the board will hear any, from any folks with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application. Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition will have up to five minutes to present their case. If there is questions, concerns, or opposition, then the applicant will be back at the microphone for up to five minutes to address that opposition. And then, finally, if there is opposition, then one and only one person who has spoken in opposition will have the final five minutes, and then that will conclude the public meeting component of the case. And then, the public hearing where we'll begin, where we will discuss here and likely come to a conclusion, hopefully not confusion, conclusion. A couple other points. This meeting is recorded in three venues. It's on TV. It'll be replayed in a day or two on Channel 16, I think it is, local access TV. It is also recorded on audio, and in a few days, you'll be able to stream it. If you go to the Go Nashua website, you can kind of click through and find the ZVA and listen to the meeting. And also, the third venue is, it'll be typed in form of written minutes. So, because of that, I ask, we ask, that there's only one person to speak at a time, and that person needs to speak into a microphone. If it's not into a microphone, it's certainly not going to be on the tape. And if it's not on the tape, if it isn't recorded, if it isn't written, it never happened. So, I ask for your patience in that, because the conversation does go a little slower than if we're just sitting around a coffee table discussing, because really, it's only one person at a time. But I ask for your patience in that, because having a good, clean record is probably the hardest part of what I do up here. So, a few other points, that if there's any aggrieved party by a decision we make, the next step that that aggrieved party would have, or any party of standing, would be to request a rehearing. And if you're interested in requesting a rehearing, you could give Mr. Falk a call tomorrow. And I forgot to introduce Mr. Carter Falk, who's the deputy planning manager here in the city of Nashua. And if you do hear a rehearing request, if you want to provide a rehearing request, you have up to 30 days, starting tomorrow, to do so. If this board decides to rehear a case, whatever decision we came to on that case will be stayed until it's heard again. If we decide not to rehear a case and you still feel aggrieved by it, your next step would be to take your case or your appeal to Hillsborough County Superior Court. So, I think I've ticked through all the instructions. Are there any questions from anyone before we get going this evening? I see no questions. Are we ready to get going? All right. So, I'd like to open the public meeting on case number one. And as I look at the agenda, just as a reminder, this case was tabled from the September 9th meeting. It's Bernie and Phil's Furniture, and it's a request for a sign. I'll read, it's a requesting a variance to encroach 11 feet into the 25-foot setback at the intersection of Spitbrook Road and Daniel Webster Highway to replace an existing ground sign with a new ground sign. So, I'd like to start off by making a motion to remove it from the table. Is there, I see a hand up from Mr. Boucher to second the motion. Any discussion? A show of hands in favor. So, that's removed from the table. So, is there anybody here to hear this, present this case? Hi, again, and I forgot to mention this, when you come to the mic, if you could give your name and address, and if the spelling of your name isn't obvious and it's not on our application, I'll ask you to spell it, so we get it right. So, hi, good evening.
Good evening. Scott Spalding.
Did you have a?
So, we want to mention, right, that all testimony that was, the last meeting was all, we've already heard that, and we, right?
Sure. And I guess I'll start this by saying, we would, we are incorporating the minutes from the last meeting onto this record, and so we're essentially picking up from where we left off last week.
This drawing, that's the new information that we got.
Okay. And we do have a new drawing in our package. So, you know, we had received this a few days ago, and we all have that. And this is what's new per our discussion two weeks ago. So, hi, excuse me for that interruption. Take it away with your name and address.
Scott Spalding with Viewpoint Sign and Awning, 35 Lyman Street, North Borough, Massachusetts.
All right, welcome back again.
Thank you very much. So, the last time we were here, we were here to seek relief from a corner setback bylaw, and the concern of the board was the skirt we had on the bottom of the sign, that it wasn't allowing enough visibility, well, actually, no visibility, under the sign. And we discussed changing the design, so that would be achieved, and that's what we have resubmitted to you for your review and hopefully approval.
All right. Short and sweet. Any questions for Mr. Spalding? I think we're all set. With that, you could have a seat.
I would just, did you get the photo view elevation as well?
Yeah. Yes, we did, yeah. Was there anybody else to speak in favor of the proposed relocated sign, Bernie and Phil's sign at Spitbrook and Daniel Webster Highway? Anybody else in favor? Anybody with questions or concerns? Seeing none, I'll close the public meeting and open the public hearing. Thoughts, Mr. Boucher?
This is exactly, I think, what, I guess, what I was looking for. I think that the applicant heard us and I think nailed it on the head, at least for me. So, just looking at the markup view here, I think that says enough, right? Even though we're looking at it through the sidewalk side, I think it's clear that it gives the intersection more of an open view appearance, especially for those coming down the hill. So, with that, I have no issues with supporting this application now, as it stands.
All right, thank you. Ms. McKay?
I concur with Mr. Boucher. And when you come down here, even though it's superimposed, you can see that if you were the car coming down the street, you could look at that almost an angle, and you could see down to the street, you could do 90, 45 degrees, you would still be able to see what you needed to see. I really do think he listened, and they gave us exactly what we asked for. So, thank you.
Thank you. I feel the same way. My comments are the same that's already been spoken. Mr. Boucher, could I probably make a motion?
Sure. Absolutely. I'd like to make a motion to approve variance for Ruben Nashua doing business as Bernie and Phil's Furniture. Applicant is Viewpoint Sign and Awning, addresses 243 Daniel Webster Highway. They are requesting variance to encroach 11 feet into the 25-foot setback to an intersection off Spitbrook Road, and to replace an existing ground sign with a new ground sign. This is in the GB zone. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. We spoke about the conditions in the previous meeting, the fact that this intersection has changed dramatically, the road has come in towards the building, and it's not really feasible, there's no feasible way to put a ground sign there without really encroaching onto the intersection setback. And the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than an area variance. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It will not adversely affect property values or surrounding parcels. We've heard no testimony for or against that. It's not contrary to public interests, and substantial justice would be served.
Thank you. I second that motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? Mr. Boucher nailed the motion. A show of hands in favor of the motion. So, that's three, so that's approved, Mr. Spalding. Just as a reminder, in New Hampshire, there is that 30-day window of appeal. There's no negative testimony tonight, but you never know. I personally would exercise caution with that, but you can charge ahead as you wish. But just as a reminder, if it were appealed, or I'm sorry, if it were, a rehearing were requested, and this board found merit to that rehearing request, then the decision would be stayed, and it would start all over again. And that 30-day calendar clock starts ticking tomorrow. All right, well, have a good evening. You're welcome to hit the road, if you'd like. All right, moving right on. Well, actually, I'd like to, I guess, did I officially close the public meeting for number one? If I didn't, I'm doing that now. Like to open the public, open the public meeting on case number two. The owners are Paul and Marie Lemire. The address is 9 Reservoir Street. The request is a special exception for an in-law accessory dwelling unit. How you doing? Good evening. If you could give us your name and address for the record, and walk us through your application.
My name's Paul Lemire. I live at 9 Reservoir Street in Nashua, New Hampshire. And we have a house there that has an in-law apartment. It's always been there, but apparently, it's never zoned, and we're putting our house out now in the market. We'd like to have it properly zoned as an in-law apartment. So, the, I think the application shows that it meets all of the standards required for an in-law apartment.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Lemire? I had a couple of questions. On your application, the proposed entrance, is that going to be on Stark Street?
That's correct.
Okay. Because it looks like there's already an entrance.
There's already, yes. As I said, the in-law apartment has always been there. It's just not been properly zoned.
So, nothing's, absolutely nothing's changing on the house?
Absolutely nothing.
You're just making, taking an existing situation and kind of legalizing it?
Yes.
All right. Well, we don't have any other questions, so I feel free to have a seat, and we'll see what else anybody else might have to say. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of the proposed in-law at 9 Reservoir Street? Anybody else in favor or opposed? Anyone opposed? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open, I'm sorry, the public meeting and open the public hearing. Or did you have a question, Mr. Boucher?
Sure. I guess we should probably just make sure that the special, we mentioned the special regulations.
Yeah.
So, just get affirmation from the.
Yeah, I guess, Mr. Falk, do you have those by chance?
Well, there's the new ordinance that we're using now.
Okay.
And.
Actually, I guess I'd like to make a motion to reopen the public meeting to clarify this. Mr. Lemire, would you, if you wouldn't mind, we just, actually, the city of Nashua, is this live now? Okay. Just some clarification, the accessory dwelling unit, let me just tick through these, and you can answer them, is clearly incidental and subordinate to the extent, use, and purpose of the primary structure?
Yes.
And that's a yes. And the maximum square footage of the accessory is less than or equal to 750 square feet?
Yes.
And the accessory dwelling unit shall be the only accessory dwelling unit within this otherwise single-family dwelling?
Yes.
Number, you've already spoken to this, but I'll just read it into the record, the accessory dwelling unit shall not alter the single-family character or appearance of the single-family dwelling or its conformity with the character of the neighborhood.
That's correct.
Uh-huh. And, "No new entrance or exit to an accessory dwelling unit shall be constructed on the front or frontage of the single-family dwelling unit."
That's correct.
That's a, yours is on the side. "No new curb cut from the street shall be constructed."
That's correct.
Yours is very easy, because it's so existing. But this is brand-new, so it's, we're walking through it for the first time together. "The exterior design of the accessory dwelling unit shall be compatible with the single-family dwelling through architectural use of buildings, forms, scale, and construction materials."
Yes.
Again, yours house is what it is, and it's not changing. "The owner of the property," I know you're selling it, but just so it's on the record that at least you, as a seller, knows this, "the owner of the property must occupy either the primary or accessory dwelling unit as the owner's principal place of residence."
Yes.
And then, the owner of the property shall provide the city of Nashua with a covenant for filing with the Hillsborough County Registry of Deeds, along with the appropriate filing fees. And there's some language here as to what's, and if you were to have an in-law in there, your testimony is that you would comply with that.
Yes.
"One all-street parking space is required for the unit."
Yes.
There is. So, that myself, "an interior door shall be provided between the primary dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit."
Yes.
Phew. And number nine of nine, "The single-family dwelling and accessory dwelling units shall not be separated in ownership, as in by condo ownership."
That's correct.
All right, thank you. You could have a seat again. Thank you, Mr. Boucher, for clarifying that. And I guess I'd like to close the public hearing and open the public meeting again. Thoughts on the matter?
I think, again, it's an existing situation that's been there for a long time, I'm sure. So, again, it, there's really no, nothing that really falls out of the boundaries here for accessory in-law, you know? It's not massive square footage or anything like that. So, I guess, from my point of view, it's met all the criteria, so I'll support the application.
Yes, thank you. My thoughts are, I agree, I'm in support for it. It's kind of interesting, this, you know, an older house in an older neighborhood, and the fact that, you know, it's been there for a long time, but it does meet the criteria quite perfectly with, you know, the door on Stark Street and the driveway on Stark Street. So, I support the application. Ms. McKay?
Yes, I support the application. It meets all the special exception requests. It meets the codes. It's existing. All they're doing is legitimizing what already exists, and it's in keeping with the neighborhood. I know the neighborhood well.
All right. Maybe I'll, go ahead, and so, would you like to hazard a motion?
Sure.
Great, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a special exception for Paul and Marie Lemire, 9 Reservoir Street, requesting a special exception for an accessory-in-law dwelling unit. It is in the RA zone, code section 190-32. We find that it is listed in the table of uses. It will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. It will not overload public water, drainage, or sewer or other municipal system. Special regulations are fulfilled, as specified by the applicant. It will not impair integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood, or be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents.
A motion on the table, seconded by Ms. McKay. Any discussion on the motion? Show of hands in favor of the motion. So, that's unanimous. So, Mr. Lemire, your application is approved. Again, there's that 30-day window. You're not really doing anything, so in a way, it doesn't matter, but just be mindful of that. And that, I'd like to close the public hearing on case number two. Thanks.
Any free move about the cabinet?
All right. I'd like to open the public meeting on case number three. The owner's owner is Patricia Kudzman, Kudzma, sorry. The address is 92 Robinson Road, and it's a variance request to, quote, "encroach six feet into the 25-foot required front yard setback to replace existing front steps and construct a 6-by-21 foot farmer's porch." Is somebody here to represent? Hi, ma'am, if you'd like to come to the microphone and give us your name and address, and walk us through your application, if you'd like.
My name is Patricia Kudzma.
You could pull that down a little if, there you go.
My name is Patricia Kudzma, and I live at 92 Robinson Road in Nashua, New Hampshire. I have a set of front stairs that is out of code. It's 10 and 3/4 inches, and the step going into my house is terrible. It's really, really difficult to get into the house. And so, I need to replace those stairs. They're a mess anyway, but that step going into the house is ridiculous, and it is out of code. So, as long as I was doing that, I wanted to make a little farmer's porch, so that I could sit out there and enjoy the front of the house, because the back of the house is in full sun all summer and wicked hot. And I have spoken to just about all my neighbors. They all have no objection. And on both sides of my house, they have farmer's porches. So, I'm here for a variance for that reason.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Kudzma? I have a couple of questions. I, when I look at your property, it's a very nice property. You keep your yard very nice. You put my yard to shame, let me tell you.
Thank you.
It, it looks to me like the house right to your left and to the right are a little bit closer to the road, like yours are.
Yes.
And in my, in my opinion, for whatever that's worth, that the proposed deck, while it, you know, it's within the front yard setback, it doesn't look like it would really be out of character with those.
I don't think so.
Other two houses. When you get to, a couple more down to the left and right, they're set a little further back.
Mm-hmm.
But just on either side, so my, just my gut feel of a drive-by was that, you know, it wasn't out of character. But you mentioned, you know, your neighbors didn't have any issue with it, and I didn't...
No. I even talked to the neighbors across the street, and they had no issue with it either.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to check on that. Thank you.
In fact, I have one of my neighbors with me.
Well, if they want to testify here in a minute, they're more than welcome.
Okay.
Hopefully, they're testifying in favor, but we'll see.
Hopefully.
Any other questions for Ms. Kudzma? All right, we're all set. You could have a seat.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of the proposed farmer's porch at 92 Robinson Road? There's no, no need. Is there anyone with questions, concerns, or objection to the proposed farmer's porches at 92 Robinson Road? No questions or concerns, so I'll close the public meeting and open the public hearing. Thoughts? How about you want to kick off, Ms. McKay?
From everything she's told us, there's no objections from the site. The house is right closest to have farmer's porches. If I was her, I'd want one pretty much too, especially as she reports, the backyard is completely sunny, and she's got no place to sit and enjoy the neighborhood. It's, it doesn't seem like it would be anything out of the ordinary to go along with. She's not asking for a huge encroachment, and so, I concur.
Thank you.
I can support this.
Mr. Boucher?
I support the application. You know, what she's doing, it's not like we're adding something where there was nothing before. There was steps there before. So, so, again, I don't think or would think that anybody would drive by and say, oh, my God, that porch is like right on the street, and it's in the, it's in the front setback. You know, we, I don't think it would be, it would dawn on you that that would be like that. So, again, I think it's a reasonable request. Again, you know, there's a safety concern that was raised. I think it makes sense what's being asked for, so I support the application.
Thank you. And for the same reasons I support it, I don't think it'll be out of character with the neighborhood. And those tall steps, the older you get, the harder they get to negotiate. It would be, you know, good to bring those up to code, and I think that's a valid reason to, you know, to prompt an improvement to the property. I think it looks good now, and my suspicion is that the farmer's porch will only add to the, to the, you know, the site of the house, and probably, if anything, improve property values. If you don't mind, maybe I'll hazard a motion. I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Patricia Kudzma. Again, it's 92 Robinson Road, and the request, again, is to encroach six feet into the 25-foot required front yard setback with, to replace existing front steps and construct a 6-by-21 farmer's porch. The board finds this variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, which is a moderate farmer's porch on the shady side of the house, which is advantageous in the short summers we have here. I think the board finds it's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance to allow the six-foot incursion. I think the board finds it will not adversely affect property values and surrounding parcels. I think the board also finds it's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice served to the landowner to allow this six-foot encroachment for a farmer's porch. So, I make a motion to approve, as presented tonight, seconded by Mr. Boucher. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, a show of hands in favor. So, that's anonymous. So, Ms. Kudzma, your application is approved. Just remember, there is that 30-day window of appeal. Any questions, you could give Mr. Falk a call on that. And I think the board wishes good luck with your project. And with that, I'd like to close the public hearing on case number three. All right, good luck. We good to go?
Yeah. What my page is here. I'm navigating. It's going fast tonight. Not that I'm complaining.
All right? All right, I'd like to open the public hearing on case... All right, I'd like to open the public hearing on case number, what is this, case number four. The address is 15 Lisa Drive. The owners are Prem and Dolly Sina, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. The request is a variance to encroach up to 7.5 feet into the forty-foot required rear yard setback to construct and attach three-season porch and deck. Is there someone here for this application? Hi, you could come on up and walk, give again your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Ray McCann.
You can hold that if you want, or snap it in there.
I just want to move it up a little bit. So, I am Ray McCann. My address is 25 De Carolis Drive in Tewksbury. I'm here representing Dolly and Prem Sinha.
Sinha.
And it is 17 Lisa Drive. And we are looking for a variance for a 7.5 encroachment into the forty-foot rear lot line. We're looking to put a three-season room. And we don't see it being any hindrance to the neighborhood in any way, according to how we drew it up. And that's why we came in for the variance.
All right, any questions? I have a couple of questions for you. So, we have like this photograph, like a side view. Does that ring a bell?
Correct.
And is it this, the seven and a half feet, is that pretty much this portion? Like the furthest out from the house, is that what is going to be in the encroachment?
Correct.
Okay. And then, this structure here, I hope you can see what I'm pointing to, is this all new as well?
Correct.
Okay, so this is the, and is this existing, or is this new also?
The upper half is new. The bottom half is existing. We've already done, we were approved for the master bedroom, which is above the house. And the three-season room attaches to that. There's a deck that comes off, if you see it up on the top there.
So, I would just say the deck is what's in the setback, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
It wasn't clear to me from, from the application. Any other questions? I guess just an observation, I'm, a, kind of a big lot that you have. I can't see behind the house, but we did get some pictures. And it, just it looks to me like what you're trying to capture is the nice viewscape, looking out down the hill, you might say. But the way the street kind of curves, my sense is it's, it's not in either a butter's face. It's kind of for your enjoyment and not really seeming to have an impact on any of butters in any way. It's just my thought, but maybe you could speak to that if you wish.
Yeah, that's correct, because the garage, which, when you're facing the house, is on the right-hand side. So, that also already comes out about four feet.
Yeah.
So, there's only, there's only going to be a minimal amount of structure that's showing to the neighbor on the right and the left.
Right.
And correct in your assessment of how the street curves around, nobody even knows that we're doing anything back there because of that. So, it would not be a noticeable parcel that would stick out like a sore thumb. It fits the, you know, we had an architect draw it up, and it, it fits really well.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. McKay? I think we're all set. You can have a seat. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Hi, if you, questions, well, let me just see, is there anybody else with, in favor of this application? Seeing none with questions or concerns, would that be you, or questions or concerns on 17 Lisa? Oh, yeah, could you come to the microphone and give us your name and address and let us know what's on your mind? Hi, good evening.
Good evening, thank you. I'm Kevin Nato. I live directly behind the property that this is being built. 22 Middle Dunstable Road. And I just had some questions. I first wanted to get an idea that I just found out, listening to this gentleman, that that is a deck coming off the back of the home on top of the season porch. Is that correct?
Well, I, I think maybe the best thing is, is there an extra application over there? If not, I could, uh...
I do have the drawing.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so on that drawing there, what we're here for tonight is the encroachment into the forty, the seven and a half foot encroachment. And on that drawing, which I have the same one here, the deck like with a railing around it.
Right.
That is the component of the house, which is, which is in the setback. So, in other words, if they didn't want or have a deck, they could build that, what we call buy right, or just go to City Hall and get a permit, which I think they've already done, because it seems to be started. But when you go into a setback, then it kicks things, you know, in front of us. So, their design has a deck there that's cutting into the setback seven and a half feet.
And that's what I saw on this, this print. I guess that's off-topic then, that, that other section. So, yeah, the deck that comes off the back of the addition, the porch, is going into the forty-foot setback, seven and a half feet, correct?
Yes.
Well, my concern is, first of all, surely don't want to put a burden on neighbors, but we've owned that home since 1955, and it's, it's a lot of privacy to the lot. And that's one thing that we love about that neighborhood. And it's something we'd like to maintain if we could. Looking at the prints, I didn't know if maybe there was an alternative for a deck that did not encroach. There seems to be room on the, you know, other parts of the home, although this is a very nice design. I guess my main point is we'd like to maintain our privacy. And if there was an alternative to putting the deck that maintained the forty-foot setback, we'd be interested in that. And as far as me personally, or my wife, we've met the neighbors, they're very nice. It doesn't bother us, but it always comes down to when you want to sell your home. Then we have quite a bit of land there, could even become two lots if someone were to use it for different, two different homes. So, it's, it's just a matter of the question on value, well, how it would affect the value of our property with an encroachment. I've never, never come across this before. So, that was my main concern, is a possible value decrease. With an encroachment, people today buying homes are awful fussy. And when they look at that, I didn't know if it could be a factor.
Yeah. Well, do you have any questions, either of you, for Mr. Nato?
No, I don't.
I do.
Actually, you do.
This picture here, are you behind these trees?
We're down as well. When you, that's a hill, so it goes down. Our home is, elevation is quite a bit lower, so they'd be looking over our roof. Our lot in the back goes up the hill towards their home.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, these trees provide a fairly substantial barrier.
Yes, they do, actually. They, they do in that respect, yeah.
Okay, fine. That answers my question. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I was trying to visualize. I mean, most of us site walk each application, but we don't walk on private property, which kind of like ends up, you know, on, on the street. And when I was talking about, it looked like this wasn't impacting any butters, butters. I was saying that from being on Lisa Drive and, and also like driving on Middle Dunstable, which I've done quite a bit, because I, I don't live far from there. I mean, my, my takeaway was, I don't think you're even going to see it summer or winter, because I know it does drop off a lot. And so, my kind of walk-around impression was, while it's always good to see if you can do a project without asking for a variance, if a variance is being asked for, the first, one of the first things I do is say, well, how does that impact on a butter? What would I think if I were living next to that? But I guess from just, you know, my walks, site walk, it felt to me like if anybody was impacted, it would be you, but it's so far downhill and it's so vegetated that I don't think you'd even know it's there, is my thought. But, you know, you live there, I don't.
Well, I, I sort of agree with that, because it is such a drop, and there is foliage there. My main concern was just to be proactive, and how does a variance affect property value when they walk the property when we were to go sell the home? That was my, my biggest concern.
I, I think, well, you know, with your question, I think, you know, we can have Mr. McKay come back and address that about is there, was there an alternative considered, or why was this design considered? But my suspicion would be like is, when the time comes that you put your home on the market, future buyers wouldn't know nor care if they, you know, not many buyers research the properties around them. Most people buy a home and don't even know what zone it's in. Is it an R40, R30, R9? You know, that, that's my impression. I'm guilty of that. I didn't know until I joined this board and found out, you know, what my house was in. But my, my gut feel would be it wouldn't make a difference. If somebody researched and said, "Hey, these, the zoning board gave a variance for seven and a half feet," you'd probably have to climb up your hill and look and say, "Okay, now I see the deck." So, my, my gut feel is it would, wouldn't make any difference at all. You know, if, if anything, the general value of the properties that you're finding on Zillow is probably going to make the biggest difference when it comes time to sell, and hopefully, those are staying high in our neighborhood. That's just my thought.
Sure. I appreciate it. I just wanted to come hear what, what was occurring at the property.
Well, thank you, Mr. Nato, and you can have a seat. And Mr. McKay, if you just, just a, what was it?
It's McCann. I'm McKay. He's McCann.
Oh, McCann, sorry.
Okay.
I'm thinking of Ms. McKay. The question was like, could you talk to us about, you know, this design and why it is the way it is? And was there an alternative considered, or would you just walk us through your thought process on that?
There was an alternative considered, but with Mr. Nato's question, you know, it's, it's a very good question that he had. The property value will increase from what Mr. and Mrs. Sinha is doing to the property in the surrounding properties, too. They're adding a lot of value to the property in a very, a very well-designed way. It'd be different after doing this for thirty-five years if the encroachment was within ten feet of a forty-foot. Then it becomes a real problem. It's, it's, it's really not good to do that. Sometimes I, I won't even do a variance if it, if it comes to that. His question is good, him being proactive and coming here to understand what it will do to his property value, and will it hurt the future sale of his home? And I have to say that, in my experience, no, it would not, because it's so minimal. But the alternative was to take the deck and remove it off the building. We vowed not to do that and left the design like it was. So, we didn't feel that the encroachment was that much of an encroachment, so we left it on there.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. McCann? Ms. McKay?
Thank you. Basically, the same question that I asked Mr. Nato. The trees, the barriers, will that provide a shield for Mr. Nato? And actually, for the Singhas also, because each resident wants privacy. So, will the trees help do that? I mean, I think it's a really tastefully done design. So, I'm just listening to Mr. Nato's concerns and also realizing that if this was me putting this here, I would value my own personal privacy also.
Yes, we have no intentions of touching any of the trees. As a matter of fact, Mr. Sinha is going to be adding some landscaping to provide more of a privacy area for both, just because that's, you know, what he has decided to do. I think it will be done very tasteful, as you said, and it will, it will, it will help the neighborhood. It will, it will, it will give value to the neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, you can have a seat. Mr. Nato, you are welcome to come back if you had any follow-up questions or concerns, but you don't have to. You could just rest your preference. Okay. That was in the microphone, but I'll just repeat what you said, because Tim is letting me know that that didn't get picked up at all. Mr. Nato was, was, didn't have any other testimony to address he's okay to rest as is. So, with that, I'll close the public meeting and open the public hearing. Thoughts, Ms. McKay?
Okay, well, I was concerned, and, and I'm glad that the trees do provide the barrier. Seven and a half feet, as Mr. McCann stated, doesn't seem like a very large encroachment. When I look at the picture, the, where the houses are in relation to each other, and I can see where the house is on seventeen as opposed to twenty-two, there's a huge gap. And so, hopefully, this, these will be the protection that Mr. Nato is so concerned with, but also that I was concerned with even from the Singhas' perspective. I think the, the design, the blueprint is really well-done. And I actually don't have an objection to this application. I got my questions and my reservations answered.
All right. And as for my, for myself, you know, when I first saw the application, I was thinking, wow, that's a lot of building to be putting into the setback. But then, what got clarified for me is, you know, the addition to the building is within the footprint of permission anyway. And it's just the, shall I say, one-story high of that deck on the back. And so, when I, again, when I site walked, I thought, I didn't know Mr. Nato, but I now know he lives at number twenty-two, because I thought, well, that might be the only property that has some impact, but it looked pretty minimal. And from the testimony and the pictures, I don't think there's any impact from the deck. And I'm of the feeling that I think it's gonna, this architectural improvement is going to dramatically increase the value of this house, and I think that helps out in the neighborhood in general. So, and I think our experience is here is when we see additions that are architecturally drawn, you know exactly what you're going to get. You see it in front of you, and that's the way it turns out. There's no surprises. So, I, I'm in support of this as it's proposed. Mr. Boucher?
I'm in support also. I, again, really appreciate the, the drawings, because that really made it very clear and easy to understand what, what was being asked for. Again, you know, we're always concerned about what the butters have to say. Again, in this case, Mr. Nato, as testified, lives in a very large piece of property. And, you know, just kind of taking the eagle eye at this drawing, from the deck to the back of his house, it's probably closer to two hundred feet downhill through the woods. So, I think that, again, as he testified, there, there is a lot of trees and stuff to blind there. I, I don't know whether or not, you know, if you were standing on that property, like I said, if and when the day would come that somebody would come and took a look at it, whether or not somebody would discern seven and a half feet out of that forty, you know? But again, we all look at things differently. But in this case, I think that the plan is quite reasonable, that the request is very reasonable. And I think there is sufficient thought that was, went into, you know, the design and what was going on in the neighborhood. So, so with all that, you know, I, I'm going to support the application.
Well, that's three of us here. Would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance for Prem and Dolly Sinha. The applicant is RJM Management. The address is 17 Lisa Drive. They're requesting a variance to encroach up to seven and a half feet into the forty-foot required year setback, required yard setback to construct an attached three-season porch and deck. It is in the R18 zone under code section ninety-one, ninety-16, table sixteen-three. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. We had no testimony, official testimony...
We had no testimony, official testimony for against that. We have our opinions of that. We heard from the applicant about that, what the thoughts were, but we feel that there is no testimony that would sway us one way or the other. It is not contrary to public interest and substantial justice would be served.
I second that motion. Any discussion on the motion? Show of hands in favor of the motion of approval. So the Sinhas and McCann, you're approved. Again, there's that thirty-day window I talked about. Keep that in mind. And with that, I'll close the public meeting on case number five. All right. Have a good evening, folks. I'm sorry, that was case number four. Are we good to keep going?
Yeah.
All right. I'd like to open the public here, a public meeting on case number five. The applicant is Tanya Resher. The address is two seventy-eight East Dunstable. The request is a variance to encroach up to sixteen feet into the forty-foot required rear yard setback to construct and attach sixteen-by-sixteen home addition with a sixteen-by-thirty-four deck. Hi, is there someone here to present this case? Hi, if you'd like to come to the microphone and just give us your name and address for the record.
This is Tanya Resher, two seventy-eight East Dunstable Road in Nashua, New Hampshire. And our variance request started when we decided to put on a sixteen-by-sixteen three-season room on the back of our home. And as many of construction projects go, we were trying to figure out how to connect it to the existing multi-level deck. We purchased our home four years ago, and this deck was already in place. So we were trying to decide, okay, the deck is thirty years old. It's seen some better days. It might, it'd be in everyone's best interest to replace it with, you know, one multi-level deck, which will give us additional egress from the screen room. The sixteen-foot variance request encroachment is primarily because of the right-hand side of the proposed deck that has been in place since we purchased the home, and I'm not sure how long previously from the other owners.
All right. Thank you. I have a couple of questions. So is the footprint of your proposed replacement deck, is that the same or close to, or how's that compared to the existing footprint of the deck?
It's close to, the right section that has the variance is sixteen-by-sixteen. And if you're looking at this piece of paper, are we all at the same one?
Yeah, that's the one we're looking at here.
Where the kitchen, this is actually a kitchen window bump out.
Okay.
And it exceeds that kitchen window bump out by probably two feet.
That, when you say it exceeds, you're talking the existing deck?
Yes, the existing deck is out by two feet past that bump out.
Okay.
Does that sound about right?
Sixteen feet. Now, it's about twelve feet.
Twelve feet out, sorry.
All right. So if it's twelve-ish feet out, we'll call it twelve-ish from the bump out.
Mm-hmm.
Your existing deck is well in the rear yard setback. I would say what you're proposing is close to what's already there.
That is correct.
Okay. And the other question I have is, what's there now? That's a multi-level deck?
That is correct.
So it's like a two-story deck?
Yes.
Wow. Does the property go down in the back or something?
The property does slope, so it goes down kind of this way. So our neighbors here are at further up, so the property slopes, so, and then it kind of furthers down and dips up the neighbors on the other side.
Okay. And then the sewer easement, does that run on your property? Is it also run on your a butter's property or just yours?
That is definitely on our property. I'm not sure if it's on the neighbors.
Okay. All right. Thank you for answering those questions. Did anybody else have any other questions? I think we're all set.
Thank you.
You can have a seat. Was there anybody else to speak in favor of this proposed deck at two seventy-eight East Dunstable? Anybody with questions or concerns? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts, Mr. Boucher?
Of course, it's a little tough to see behind there, right? So I just went on the, on Google and all that, and sometimes you get, you know, they're years behind, right? Sometimes you get some different views, right? So definitely there was something there before. So, you know, that's definitely, and I saw that, and I was trying to figure it out. And as you say, you know, you know, that's where the most incursion is, but again, a large percentage of the deck was already in the, in the setback, in the rear setback. So I think they're replacing, you know, an existing structure. Obviously, they want to improve it. They're not looking to, you know, they're not looking to push the whole structure lengthwise further out. So I think, I think it's reasonable. I think, again, it's an improvement, you know, obviously to their, to their property. You know, as I drove around the neighborhood, you know, it's interesting because it's really, the topography is very different over there, right? So obviously, you know, there's nobody here to speak against it. So, you know, again, I have a comfort with this. Again, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a flag lot, right? And if you look at the buildable lot footprint, there isn't much place to go except to the right. But that's not practical for what, you know, what they're looking for, right? So if we look at that, the footprint, I mean, they pretty much used it all up. And again, you know, again, they're not, they're not, there's no encroachment onto the sewer easement, so, you know, that's good. There's no, there's nothing there. Not that they could, but, you know, there's nothing there, so I'm comfortable with it. I don't really see a detriment to anybody or anything.
All right. Thank you. Ms. McKay?
I concur with Mr. Boucher and from what the applicant spoke about, and I'm assuming that her husband was the man who addressed the kitchen window bump out. If the deck is already coming out twelve feet into the setback, for my, in my head, they're asking for four feet to come out to sixteen, which doesn't seem like a huge amount. There's an existing deck, and you just want to come out that little bit further for safety, for aesthetics, for enhanced value, not only for the home but for the neighborhood. And so I don't have any objection. I support the application.
Thank you.
You're fine, Ellen.
Yeah, when I first got the application, I was a little confused by what was going in and what was there. But the clarification that there's a deck, that this proposed replacement deck is approximately the same, seems a little bigger than what's there. You know, I'd be very sensitive to what, you know, especially if there was an a butter in the back. I thought the topo went down, and I thought, you know, this might be a huge, you know, you know, eyesore. I mean, not that it wouldn't be a beautiful thing, but in somebody else's eyes, if they wanted to look, you know, at the sky versus this, but we're not hearing anything. And I think something else that speaks in favor of this application is there's an existing deck of, generally of this order of magnitude anyway, and people are probably used to it if anybody can see it or care in the first place. So it's almost like replacing in kind. And I think Mr. Boucher brings up a good point about it's a flag lot, you know, the house is situated where it is. You know, to have a deck on that far side doesn't work with the design of the house. You want it all at the kitchen, and that's why the deck's probably where it is right now anyway. So I think the special conditions of the property of the flag lot and the existing deck, to me, is a good justification to, you know, for support for this. So I'm in favor of it also. Maybe I'll make a motion, if you don't mind?
Go ahead. Great.
I'll make a motion on behalf of Tanya Resher at two seventy-eight East Dunstable Road. I make a motion to approve her request to encroach up to sixteen feet into the forty-foot required rear yard setback to construct and attach sixteen-by-sixteen home addition with a sixteen-by-thirty-four deck. The board finds that this variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, which is essentially replacing a deck somewhat in kind but a bit larger as they add this addition to their home. I think the board finds that it's not an unreasonable request, given the shape of the property and the situation of the house and the fact that the deck, a large deck, multi-level deck, has already been present for many years. I think because of those special conditions, the board finds it's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. I think the board finds it will not adversely affect property values of the surrounding parcels. I think the board finds it's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice is served. So I make a motion to approve as presented. Seconded by Mr. Boucher. Any discussion on the motion? Show of hands in favor. So that's unanimous. So your application is approved. Keep in mind, there's a thirty-day window of appeal. And with that, good luck on your project. And I close the public hearing, I'm sorry, the public, yes, the, the public meeting on case number five. We're moving quick tonight. Are you staying up with us?
I'm doing it. One minute. It was Jack JP three zero. Okay, sorry, I'm tracking on a couple of different sheets of pages.
Ready for me to get going on there? Okay. I'd like to open the public, actually, before we start the public hearing, the case at sixty-five Nagel Street, our first action is a determination as to whether a material change, there's a material change of circumstances affecting the merits of the application has occurred or that the application is for a use that its material differs in nature and degree from the variance denied by the ZBA on September thirteenth of last year. So just as a refresher, this board heard a case for, at sixty-five Nagel Street, and it was for converting a single family to a two-family. It happened over the course of two meetings. And ultimately, on September thirteenth, this board denied the two-family at this residence at this, at ninety, sixty-five Nagel Street. Their request before us tonight is for a special exception to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit. And also, if this, the request tonight for that in-law unit, the in-law unit would be a thousand one hundred square feet, which is in, beyond the seven hundred and fifty square foot allowed. But the first action of this board is to determine if there's a material change of circumstances or this application is material, is materially different in nature from the previous application of a two-family. Is there someone who'd like to start the conversation? If not, I'm happy to jump in. Maybe I'll jump in. My thoughts on the request for an in-law versus a two-family is, I think those are materially different. I think they're two different things. The fact that the in-law with the requirements we have is a less intensive use than a two-family. Also, this property was previously subdivided, and it went from a two-family to a one-family, if you remember from that last case. So I guess in short, I think a in-law apartment is much less intensive than a two-family. And I really think it's a completely different application, just asking for an in-law versus a two-family. And that's where I'm at on that, but there's three opinions here, and I'm looking forward to hearing the other two.
I concur with you. I think it is different. They did ask for a two-family, and as I recall, there was, they had just moved in, so I'm refreshing my memory, and the accessory dwelling unit, the ADU, is very, very different from a two-family. Everything about it is different. And so I agree. I think it's substantially different.
I would agree also. I don't know how, if we, if I could have anything to argue that it is not a material, there's not a material difference. So that's how I looked at it. I mean, it would be very difficult, for me anyways, to, to take that position and to, and to back that up. So in my opinion, I believe that there is material, not material difference.
Okay. Just in case anyone in the audience isn't aware, the Fisher versus Dover determination. When a case is denied by this board, people can't keep coming back and asking for the same thing over and over. You have to, there's got to be one of two circumstances in order for the board to hear it again. The first is that there has to be a substantial change in the application, or there has to be a substantial change in the neighborhood. And it's pretty obvious, there really hasn't been a substantial change in the neighborhood. It looks, looks, and it's really the same neighborhood as it was last summer. So we look at the application, and as the board discussed, you know, going from, they've determined that it's going from a two-family, which was denied, to a potential in-law apartment, which is still a single-family home with an accessory dwelling unit, that that's really not a, you know, it's a substantial change as far as the application. So the case can, can now move forward. So that's really what that is.
So I guess I'll make a motion, I think we should just cover it with a motion, that the board finds this request for a accessory dwelling unit to be materially different than the previous request for a two-family. Is there a second to the motion, Mr. Boucher? So there's a second to the motion that this is materially different, and a show of hands in favor. So this board, again, finds it to be materially different. So with that, I'll open the, the public hearing on case number six. Is there someone who'd like to speak in favor of this application for an accessory dwelling unit?
Hi, my name is Jose Valderas. I'm living in sixty-five Nagel Street.
Hi, welcome.
Hello. Crystal Valderas, sixty-five Nagel Street also.
Welcome back, I should say.
Thank you. So as you had mentioned, we were denied for the two-family unit. We are back to ask for the in-law apartment. Believe we do meet most of the requirements or all of the requirements for it. It was suggested to us after the denial of the multifamily. Again, it's not, everything is all there. It's existed, and they have their own entrance. I attached a layout to the application so you guys could see like how it is set up. And so they have their own entrance from their house for the outside. There's also an entrance inside our house for upstairs. It is family, so I guess that would be a good thing for the neighbors so they know that it's just not random people just coming to move in, you know? It's, we're all family. They kind of know us like a little bit more, too, so they know how we are. And so no, nothing's going to be changed, no, no construction, no add-ons, nothing. It's all there. It's been there since like nineteen seventy-something, whenever they built it. Not exactly sure about that year, but, so everything's there, like all plumbing. They have their own AC units. They have their own fuse boxes. Those are what they're called now. And in addition to that, we're also want to request for, to, because I think it's like a seven hundred and fifty square feet allowance, and this is one thousand one hundred, so we're also requesting for that. And again, everything on the property already exists. They have their own parking and stuff like that, too.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for the Valderas? Maybe we'll just tick through, there was an amended ordinance just last week, and there's some criteria here. You probably might, if you were here for the first case, or the Reservoir Street. The first one is the accessory dwelling unit shall be clearly incidental and subordinate in extent use and purpose to the primary structure and does not exceed seven hundred and fifty square feet. Well, yours does, but you're here for that variance of eleven hundred.
Yes.
Number two, the accessory dwelling unit shall be the only accessory dwelling unit.
Yes.
Testament, fine that it is. The accessory dwelling unit shall not alter the single-family character or appearance.
No, 'cause it, nothing is being built on or anything, it's already there.
I mean, this is a, a little bit different, 'cause it's been this way for some time, kinda like the Reservoir Street case. No new entrance or exit shall be constructed on the front. Is your exit on the front? 'Cause I mean, it's technically...
Uh, no, side.
On the side. This does say no shill, shall be constructed, and of course, this situation is, what's there has already been there.
Right. Well, I mean, my main home is on the front and side, and then theirs is on the side too, kinda next to our door, on the side.
No new curb cut from the street shall be constructed.
No.
The exterior design of the accessory dwelling unit shall be compatible with the single-family dwelling.
Yes.
I think your testimony is that it is.
Yes.
The owner, this is an important one, the owner of the property must occupy either the primary or accessory dwelling unit as the owner's principal place of residence?
Yes.
The owner of the property shall provide, there's a covenant, have you seen this language in here?
No.
Okay. I guess, so there's a, a covenant that you need to file with the Hillsborough County Registry of Deeds, and give a copy of that to Mr. Falk. So what I'm gonna ask you is to testify here that you will take care of that and interface with Mr. Falk, if this is approved, to ensure that that happens.
Yes, anything necessary, yes.
Okay. And one off-street parking space is required? I think your site has that. An interior door shall be provided between the primary dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit.
Yes, already has that.
And the, the single-family dwelling and accessory dwelling unit should not be separated in ownership, such as by condominium ownership.
No.
And you're, I think your, your testimony is, you won't, you're not gonna do that, is that correct?
No.
Okay, just helping you out with that.
Okay.
All right.
The covenant, all it is, is just the code section.
Okay.
You just sign it. That's, that's really all it is. Nothing scary.
Okay, like, do I call back, and like, they'll tell me what to do?
We'll, um, we'll get in touch with you.
Okay.
We could, like, email you one, and you can just send it back in.
Okay.
Pretty easy.
That's good, thanks.
Are there any other questions for the Valderas? I think we're all set, you can have a seat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else to speak in favor of this application? Hi. If you could give us your name and address again, I've forgotten it since the last time.
Gary F. Graves, I own the property at sixty-one, sixty-three Nagel Street. This is my third time on this property, because back when Matt bought the house, it was a duplex, and he asked me to make it into a single-family. He said, "It's your property, do what you want." I just wish I knew that he was gonna cut down the trees, because we used to have privacy between our back yards, and now there's no privacy. But these people, these people are really great people, they've been there since August, I believe. We had parties over there together and everything, they, they could park four cars on one side, on the main driveway, they could park two cars on the other side, so there's plenty of room for the in-laws, you know? But, you know, I have no problem against it, and I talked to the neighbors, and they're all for it.
All right, thank you. Any questions? I think we're all set, thanks for coming tonight. Is there anybody else with testimony in favor of this application? Questions or concerns? Seeing no questions or concerns, I'll close the public hearing. Questions or concerns? No? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts? Ms. McKay, you're looking at me, take, take it away.
Okay, fine. I think that this is existing, this meets the family's needs, it, I can't find any reason to object to it. The one thing I did wanna say that was to Mr. Graves, thank you for coming back three times. It's nice to hear when someone comes in and speaks about not only knowing your neighbor, but socializing with your neighbor, and making the neighborhood what it's supposed to be, you speak truly from your own personal experience. And so that's, it becomes personal, and it's, it's much easier to understand. So no, I have no objection to this whatsoever.
Mr. Boucher?
I'm in favor of the application. Again, it, it's nothing that's being done new, newly renovated, it's an existing property. I think the, the burden is way less on, you know, the neighborhood, so to speak, right? Because of, because it's not the same thing as having a two-family. This, and the special, you know, regulations that have to be fulfilled, so it's not, it's not gonna be an absentee owner type thing, and, you know, where we see kinda that stuff. So, so again, I, I think it's very reasonable, like, the, you know, seems like the testimony from the abbot are, in the positive sense, is that it sounds like they're good neighbors. So, I, I, you know, have no reservations in supporting this application.
One other thing, the last time, when they wanted to make this a two-family, this brought out an awful lot of people from the neighborhood who had objections. This request has, has only brought out someone who is supporting it, and so that speaks volumes also.
All right. My thoughts, you've captured them already. I think that this is, like we already talked about, materially different, and much less intensive than a two-family. Again, I'm kinda repeating what you two have already said, but, so for the same reasons, I think it works much better, less intense on the neighborhood, and I'm approve, approve of it as is proposed. I guess I'll make a motion on behalf of Jose Valderas at sixty-five Nagel Street. And this first motion is gonna be for the special exception. I make a, a motion to approve the special exception as it's proposed in code, is it one ninety dash two six four?
It is thirty-two, okay, one ninety thirty-two.
I'm sorry, one ninety-two?
Thirty-two.
Dash thirty-two is the, the code sec, section, excuse me. I think the board finds it will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. I think the board finds it will not unload, it will not overload public water drainage sewer or other municipal sewer system. By testimony, the special regulations for an accessory in-law are fulfilled by the applicant, as testimony states that they adhere to all, will adhere to all of those. And I think the board finds it will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood, be, or be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents. Again, this property, nothing's changing with the structure. So I make a motion to approve the special exception as requested, seconded by Mr. Boucher, a show of hands in favor. And so that component is approved. We also have before us a variance to exceed the maximum size of an accessory dwelling unit. Again, seven hundred and fifty square feet is the maximum allowed. This proposal is a thousand one hundred square feet. I think the, I think, the board finds a variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property. While perhaps it could be limited to seven hundred and fifty square feet, the existing arrangement of the structure is a thousand one hundred square feet. And I think, given that special condition of the property, it's, the board finds that it's reasonable that the applicant can pursue the in-law at that size. The board finds it's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. There, again, there's nothing changing with the structure. I think the board finds it will not adversely affect other property values of surrounding parcels, and it's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice is served to allow the one thousand one hundred square foot accessory dwelling unit. That motion is seconded by Mr. Boucher. Discussion on the motion? Show of hands in favor. So that's approved, so your application is approved. Again, there's a thirty day window of appeal, and good luck with your home. And with that, I'll close the public meeting on case number six. And, Mr. Falk, did you say Ms. Vitale, you were expecting her?
We are expecting her. She said she'd be late, but she didn't know exactly when.
Okay.
You know, to take a five-minute breather or something.
Yeah, 'cause we also have minutes and the, the other agenda. Maybe we'll take, maybe we'll do, take care of that other business first. What we're gonna do here, folks, is Ms. Vitale is expected to arrive here, and I think we'd all prefer to have four instead of three, so we're just gonna, instead of jumping right into that rehearing request, we're gonna take care of some other business, and see if we don't get another voting member up here before we get going on the rehearing request.
Minutes of May ninth.
So we have minutes for May ninth. The three of us were here for that meeting. I've reviewed the minutes. I didn't find any corrections or changes myself. I was wondering if you had any changes or corrections, Mr. Boucher, or Ms. McKay?
No.
So I see heads shaking that none of us three have corrections or amendments, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for May ninth, two thousand seventeen, as presented, seconded by Mr. Boucher. Show of hands in favor. So that is approved, we can check that off. And then, do we have the?
No, the, the next agenda is June thirteenth, it's an extra week in the schedule, so we're still working on that. And once, once the agenda's available, I'll email it to everybody.
Okay.
Right now, we've got about seven or so cases.
So it'll be a long night. Well, with that, I, I'll, why don't we go into recess here, and...
Let's say seven, well, ten of eight.
Ten of eight.
I try for eight.
Yeah, why don't we try, we'll plan on reconvenient at eight, and see where we are.
Some time, and...
Maybe I'll try giving her a call. So we're in recess now. I'll try giving her a call.
Actually, let me take this, come on down. You know what, do you have her number? I thought I had it.
Yes, I do.
Ready?
Uh, ready.
I could've sworn I had it.
All right, here we go.
Ready?
Eight oh one.
Oh.
Eight oh one, three three seven one.
What's your cell?
Eight oh one, three three seven one.
It's up downstairs there.
Hey, Kathy, how you doing?
It doesn't ring a bell.
It scares.
What was his role?
Quality, uh, was an auditor, was in today at work. Desktop auditor, he does, he works alone.
So is he still an atrium?
Yeah, he, yeah, so he's an atrium.
He's auditing events?
Yeah, 'cause they, 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 um, occasionally send pipettes to us for calibration.
Oh, oh, oh.
And so they, and I'm like, I never seen a pipette when I was there. So they must use it in their formulas, they do formulas and stuff.
Yeah, they do theirs.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Back in the search, stuff, the one on there, one with the visual.
Yeah, it's probably what it is. I did know if you...
Mike Stevens.
Michael Stevens. He spells it, H-I-C-H-E.
That's different.
Yeah, it does.
It do.
Two of them, two of four eight.
She responds.
She says she's gonna call it in.
One more minute. Are we ready to get going again?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Boucher, are you...
No, absolutely.
All right, stop.
Tell him it's ready. Also?
Also, right? All right, we'll get back in the session. Actually, I'd like to start off by recognizing or thanking Tim, the man behind the door, who's got the camera work going. We appreciate that. And I hear that he does a good job of covering us. So, that's the feedback I get, Tim. Thank you for what you do back there. All right, I did reach out to Ms. Vitale. She is at her business, closing a deal, and is a solid half hour away from getting here. I just wonder what your thoughts are on Mr. Boucher and Ms. McKay.
My opinion unfortunately is that we have to move along. That's my opinion.
Ms. McKay?
I concur.
I, I do too. So, I think we'll start the rehearing request now. I just beg one thing. I, I told her I'd notify her if we were waiting or not. And I'm gonna tell her we're gonna proceed because if I don't, she'll, after her business is done, she'll come running down here. So, just bear with me. I'm just gonna send her a quick text. Yeah, I have it. Go on. All right. So, I'd like to start the public hearing on the rehearing request of one twenty-two Manchester Street. Just as a refresher, there's four questions that by law we discuss. The first question, and I think we'll just tick through them, one to four. The first question, was there any procedural error? This includes improper notice, denying someone the right to be heard, et cetera. Maybe I'll go clockwise here if I could indulge Mr. Boucher to jump in.
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, Ms. McKay?
No.
I, I, I don't think so. I think the board allowed everyone who wanted to speak to speak, extending some testimony where I think the board felt it was appropriate because it was such a deep case. The notice by the city to all the abutters, I think, was thorough. All the abutters were notified. So, I concur that I don't think there was any procedural error. Going on to question number two, was it an illegal decision? In other words, did the board fail to completely address each of the points of law required for the, for the variance? Mr. Boucher, would I mind if you kicked that off as well? If not, I'll take a turn.
Why don't you, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm deep in thought right now.
Sure. It looked like you were deep in thought, and I'll let you stay there while I, I speak. I think the board spent a lot of time discussing the points of law. Mr. Sokol makes the argument that we get it wrong or got it wrong in that, I mean, a couple, I'll just try to summarize his arguments, that the federal law is, and the state law is not as clear as the Nashua law. And that, I think, for that reason, in his argument, he thinks, you know, we've gotten it wrong. And also, he speaks to the point number seven. I'm just gonna open up my code book. It's actually already open here. The homes for the elderly, point number seven. You know, I've highlighted the elderly or other persons who are unable to fully care, care for themselves, the elderly or other persons who do not desire to live independently. The care typically includes room board supervision and assistance in daily living, such as housekeeping services. In, in my opinion, that element of number seven was what the board discussed a lot. And I believe Mr. Sokol is saying that it's not cut and dry and the, the, the bar isn't that high and it, and that by, by us or me believing it has to meet that test is an illegal decision. I hear his point then, I hear it now in the rehearing request. But I believe that this board, and my role in this board, is to interpret the codes that are here in front of us. And I believe that the, the definition of elderly does need to meet that test. There's another point that he makes, or in the rehearing request, that I think ties into this question, and that is the point of the other two elderly housing or over fifty-five that were approved by the city of Nashua. And my feeling of that is if, if I was asked if they meet elderly housing by these regulations, I think they do not. Yet, they were approved, but they never came to the board. So, uh, if, and I see, like, two wrongs don't make a right. While those were approved, I don't think, you know, I should be, in my opinion, approving this. I stick with this definition of number seven and feel it needs to meet that test. So, I guess that's a long way of saying is, while I, I think the applicant or attorney Sokol is making the argument that it's an illegal decision, I don't believe, you know, it was an illegal decision. And I, I believe we addressed all the points of law. That's where I'm at on that one. So, I'm looking to hear two other opinions on question number two.
I was the lone dissenter in that vote. So, again, when I look at this, I'm trying to, trying to, you know, look at it from a different point of view. But, you know, I, I struggle with the illegal decision, but I still stand in the same position I, I was on, on the night that we made the decision. So, I probably, you know, probably have a completely polar opposite, you know, view of what, what you just said, but that's, you know, why we're here. So, again, what I struggle with in, in the rehearing request is the illegal decision. And so, maybe you can help me with, or refresh my memory, or help me again. When we say it's, when we refer to as an illegal decision, you know, decisions can be made and not everybody agree with it and still be legal. And then, the, you know, or, or are we talking a legal decision like, like we completely did something that was, you know, not correct, you know, from, from, from this point of view? So, just help me with that a little bit.
I guess my thought on that is, I think you encapsulated, first of all, like, the meeting pretty well in that there, there were four who felt it doesn't meet the definition of elderly housing and the, the center or yourself that felt it does meet the test of elderly housing. So, that was the way things panned out on the night we voted on this. And it's, it is always a struggle when a dissenter is now confronted with a rehearing request because your passionate opinion was, you know, it, it, it is elderly housing. You know, mine isn't. We differ on that. So, then it, you know, so then you ask, well, was it illegal? I, I guess my answer on that is I, I, oftentimes, I've been a dissenter on a rehearing request. And the way I answer that is, I guess if I thought it was completely out of whack, then maybe it's illegal. But if I feel that the discussion was within the realm of reasonableness, that different zoning board members could come into play with and something wasn't completely out to lunch, then, you know, I, you know, I guess I'm saying my experience is when I'm at the center on a rehearing request, again, if I feel the opinions are reasonable that somebody can come up with even though I disagree with them, I feel it's legal. If it was just a gross misinterpretation or something out to lunch, I guess I could feel that's illegal. I, I guess I don't know if I've ever felt an illegal decision was made. I'm just trying to think. I've been sitting here a while. I guess I can't remember as I sit here. But, you know, I agree. I mean, illegal is a pretty strong word. But that's, that's the word that's, that's there before us.
Right. So, so when I, when I look at this, you know, sometimes what I try to do is look at it like, did, did we not do anything in question one, right, that would cause this to be an illegal decision? But I also don't know if it's really tied. So, so again, my struggle is, is the position I took. But I also am thinking the same way you can. So, the way I could, I could look at this is, though I do not agree with the, I was very specific about one portion of the, and that's why I dissented, though I not, I don't agree, I don't know, I don't think that I believe that there was something illegal about the decision that was made. I guess I don't, I don't see it. It's not hitting me in the face.
I just wanna jump in. I mean, one of the points that a tone, or attorney in the rehearing request, and, and maybe you could argue it could just be illegal, was about, you know, the email or text or whatever it was, I, uh, that, that was sent. And the, you might say the charge or the discussion in the rehearing request was, was it a preset decision? Was, was, was the board doing the bidding of the mayor? And so, I'd just like to, to speak about that because, and I can only speak for myself. So, I'm speaking for myself. I certainly had no idea where anybody else stood on this decision coming into the meeting. I didn't discuss it with anybody else. I didn't discuss it, nor do I at all regularly talk to the, the mayor. And I certainly had no idea where he stands before or after the, the case, on, on this case. The, the first and only thing I knew was when I read it in, in the rehearing request, I guess it was. And I, again, I'm only speaking for myself. So, for myself, I didn't, I wasn't doing anybody's bidding or discuss it with anyone. My opinion was what I formed from reading over and over, section one ninety dash forty-two and the merits of the case. And, but I'm only speaking for myself. But I, I guess I ask as chair that we each address that because I think, you know, it's, it's actually kind of alarming to me. It's, it's embarrassing also when you say, well, it sounds like the board did the bidding of the mayor. That wasn't for me, but if I could indulge, I'm asking you to kick off first again, Mr. Boucher, if you wouldn't mind your thought on, on that charge.
Sure. So, so my opinion is, and again, we don't talk to each other about these cases before we come to the board. So, it's not like I was polling everybody or asking, you know, what happened. I just read what I read. But again, I, you know, I generally think that we're all good people, and I don't think that there's any malice that's done on purpose. I do believe in this case, or any case, that, you know, it's all about perception, right? So, we don't do things, you know, you know, generally, people are not doing things to hurt each other or to create undue tensions or to, you know, do these things. But it's just a perception of it, right? And I believe, you know, that, you know, again, I, I don't have any contact with the mayor, and the mayor doesn't talk to me and, you know, about anything. So, so again, like you, I, I have no idea about any of this. You know, so my opinion is, is that perception is there, and that's what the public would see, right? That does not mean that I believe that anybody was in collusion, whatever. That's not for me to judge. All I can say is what I kind of see kind of face value. So, you know, how does this affect if this was, if, let's just say this was truly something that would affect it, then it would've been a three. Then, you know, if you eliminate that, if, you know, if you throw that in the mix, there was five, five voters here, right? So, that could've went, that could've went to three to two, you know? So, it still would've ended it the way it did, you know? If, if there was no other means of conversation. So, to me, I mean, from a personal point of view, I don't, I, I, you know, there's no information other than what was in the text. But from sitting from the outside of this board, looking in, there, there's gotta be questions. I mean, that's, I think that's, would be a natural reaction to, to question it. So, does that rise, you know, would that rise to saying, hey, you know, just that in itself should have a rehearing to be, you know, fair and impartial? I mean, I, I don't know. I, I could see that going both ways. Again, my opinion. Again, I make no judgments. I, I know Mrs. McKay and the mayor to be, the, the only interaction I have with them is professional and, and honest. But again, I'm not looking at it any deeper than that. So, again, that's just my opinion.
Would you like me to answer these questions? Because I can. Okay, first off, I didn't know a thing about one twenty-two Manchester Street until I got the packet. I never spoke to the mayor. I never knew his opinion. There was no coercion. There was no request that I absolutely, you know, vote however he wanted because I didn't know how he wanted anybody to vote. My determination, my decision was made based on information that came here, was based on information that everybody said. It was based on information from not one, but two attorneys. We had the benefit of hearing both sides, not just one. As for the text, I stand by what I said. The zoning board absolutely did its job. It's an honor and a privilege to serve with each and every one of you. And to be a part of such an intricate, well-vetted case was amazing to me. And the fact that I did do the text, sometimes I would see the mayor afterwards because the aldermen would still be meeting. And in my capacity as chair of the Nashua delegation, I do encounter the mayor, but on legislative issues. I have filed legislation on behalf of the city of Nashua. So, I mean, that is separate and apart, but that relationship is existing. He's somebody I've known for years. But did I text him for any other reason than to say, well done, good job? It was after a public decision. It was in the public domain. It was on TV. There was no malice aforethought. There was no nefarious covert reasons. It probably was just like when you go to Mark a Basket and you come through the checkout and the checkout person is really kind to you and... and the checkout person is really kind to you, and the person who's bagging is wonderful, I'm the guy that goes to the manager and says, you know what, well done, I'm glad you hired those people, made my experience really good, I will come back. It basically, in my head, was the same thing. This was well done, it, it was just amazing. In my capacity, in Concord, we are very open, very transparent, and that would be a determination that would have been, went back to the chair or vice chair of the committee. I mean, those are just the natural order of things that get done, and how they get done in my world. It meant nothing more than clearly what it said, there was no more, no less. I don't know what else to say, other than, do I think I did anything wrong? No. Would I do it again? Yeah, probably not, it caused a firestorm and made a lot of people wonder about things. And so, for that reason, no, but for the reason of, did I do something intrinsically wrong or horrible? No, I did not. And as for the determination and the decision, again, we heard from two attorneys, not just one, and I wonder, if the staff had the opportunity to hear from both sides, would the decision they made have been the same? So there's all those thoughts that go through your mind, but the decision that I made, I made right here at the time of the hearing, and took everybody's input into consideration. The attorneys, the owners of the property, or the applicants, the neighbors, my fellow board members, Carter, everybody's comments carried the equal amount of weight, and that's how the decision was made, not because I had any other information coming in. I came in just as blind as anyone else. I did not know a thing.
All right. I guess I'll, a little bit more on this subject, this topic of the email was, I was, I guess, really trying to have all five of us here, you know, and really it backfired, you know, by setting it to a, a date when we thought someone would be here, we actually have less here than would have been here if we had it earlier.
Yeah, we were wrong here.
I guess it's a lesson learned for me, but here we are tonight, there's three of us, I guess in absentia of the other two voting members, Mr. Vitale and Mr. Shaw. I just want to say, as I sit here, my opinion would be that there was no collusion between them, I've worked with them on, for many years, but that's just my opinion, I'm not feeling that there was an injustice or bidding being done on those two, but that's just, just my opinion. So let's move, move on, if we can, to the third question, or did you have more on this?
So, yeah, just, just a comment, right? Again, this, this has nothing to do with any personal views or anything, but as I sit, as I looked at, as I thought about it, and again, just, again, my opinion, because of my, of what I thought was, again, not, not an indication of, of anybody's forethought or malice, but just the perception from the public, I guess I'm one to think that, not in every case, but, you know, is it applicable here, where just the perception of it and the importance of this board, you know, would there be more harm in rehearing, or less harm in rehearing, based upon the fact that, that, that there was, there could be a perception, all right? And again, that's not a perception pointed at Mrs. McKay, it's just the general perception that, that, that even though we could sit here and prove that that's not the case, just the idea that that may, that may linger, right? So, kind of, in my view, to, to put that completely to bed, and to say, hey, you know what, we're not even going to, in my case, I would say, not even going to, to take a chance, you know, it would be, it would serve better to rehear it, rehear the case, and, and maybe the same outcome comes out, but rehear the case, you know, and again, in light of, you know, of what the perception may have been for the original decision. I am not arguing whether or not the decision, you know, at this point, is legal or illegal, I'm just saying, again, it's about perception. And, and maybe what I'm saying is, has nothing to do with the law or, or the legality of it, it's just, again, my opinion. So it's, I just wanted to, you know, just put that out there.
Thank you.
That's, that's all.
I guess I'll follow up on that, and, and hearing, first of all, knowing that I was not predispositioned one way or the other on this, and hearing the testimony from you two, certainly the rehearing request before us is to, to nix a member and rehear the case. I, I, like you, I don't see the benefit to that. I mean, sure, mathematically, we had a four to one vote, and one of the fours is being requested to step down, but I, you know, so mathematically, that could, for example, you know, help, help the applicant, if you do the simple math, but I don't find value in that. I, if we heard the case again, we'd be hearing the exact same information from both parties, and essentially, we, we'd have another, you know, if you were to, we were to hear, and if you were to recuse yourself, which you have the right not to anyway, and, you, you know, we have another member pulled in, and to me, it's, I don't, I don't find value in that, it's, it's a huge burden and cost across the board, and there's, I don't find value in it. So I just wanted to follow up with you, as I agree with what you're saying on that. Moving on to question number three. Does a request for rehearing contain any new information not presented, excuse me, or available to the board at the original public hearing? Thoughts on that? Ms. McKay, you want to kick that off?
Well, if you're looking on the merits of the case, no, I don't think it does.
Mr. Boucher, you'll?
Again, I'm, I'm in a different position, so in general, I would say, could possibly be, because there's, there's some definition that, that wasn't there before, but does it, you know, again, that's my opinion, so I don't know what that rises to, but I'm just making that comment.
My thought on question number three is, in the rehearing request, I mean, there's, you know, I think several key points, you know, on the top of page, is this numbered? Well, it's, it's not numbered.
The bottom.
Oh, okay, yes it is. So on the top of page seven, you know, the, the point about a housing community need only demonstrate three factors, that is a criteria which was argued, you know, in the very beginning, it's reiterated here, but that was argued before, and then down a paragraph under the current state law, that I feel was argued in the very first presentation, we have the federal law, the state law. I think it's being represented here without new information, I think the information was very complete and thorough on the, on the first go around. And then on page eight in the middle, about the 120 will comply with all federal and state laws, and the applicant has demonstrated such compliance. Again, that, that's a, you might say, a strong point on behalf of the rehearing request, but it's, it, it's not new information, and, and I, I still disagree with it. I mean, it needs to come up as part of the rehearing request, but I don't find it new information. And even point number five, you know, about the staff is treating us differently, you might say, than the other two, that argument was discussed before, and I think the board, certainly in my opinion, the majority was, if two mistakes were made before, that doesn't mean that if the board, I feel that this should be defined as elderly housing now, and those others probably should have been, but they weren't, but that shouldn't, in, in my mind, that shouldn't change my opinion, say this is elderly housing, when I don't think it meets it. So I guess that's kind of a long way of me saying, I don't think there's any new information here. I, I think it's a restating of what was argued very thoroughly the first time. Question number four, is there, is there anything else anybody wants to say on question number three? On question number four, is there anything which would, could cause the board to make a different decision? Anybody want to kick that off? If not, I'll kick it off. There you go.
I don't really have any to say about that.
Okay. I guess, I, I, somebody's got to go first, it'll be me. I don't find that there's anything new in the rehearing request that would cause me to make a different decision. The biggest element of newness here was the, the communication with the mayor, but I, in my mind, Ms. McKay has spoken to that, so I don't, there's nothing here that would cause me to make a different decision, or the board to make a different decision, in my opinion. Just my opinion. Anybody else want to jump in on question number four, please?
I don't think so either. I have spoken to that text and did nothing wrong, and would not recuse myself today, and won't recuse myself tomorrow.
I, I think I made my opinion, no, about what my thoughts are. Again, it's not a judgment, it's just what I think, so I probably have a different view on that, so. Yeah, I, I, I could see cause for, for the things that I've talked about.
All right. So we've kind of batted around the four questions, so I guess I have a question, I, I, I mean, in summary, as I've answered the four questions, I, I feel the board should not rehear the case, that's, you know, we've discussed the four questions, you know, where my opinion is on the four of those, and in summary, I don't feel it should rehear the case, because I'm just trying to encapsulate it, how we feel as a summary, and I'm just wondering where you two are at in the summary of how you want to, you're feeling about the rehearing request overall.
So, we're going to take a vote, so I know where the position that we're in right now. So a two to one won't do anything, and we'll be here all night, and if that's what it has to be, that's what it is. What I'd like to do is, is, it sounds like, you know, both of you are going to deny the rehearing request, right? That's what it appears to be. I will just like to reiterate in the motion that, you know, a general reason why I'm, I'm going to agree to deny the rehearing request, but make clear that, you know, I have positions that don't align with, you know, with the, with the general board, and, and I guess it sounds kind of convoluted, but I think that at this point, this will, if it, case, if it does, it'll just move it on to, to the court, if that's where it's going to go, because I, I think it does a disservice to keep it here, and, and it's very clear that if I were to hold on to this, that's, nothing's going to happen, unless, you know, again, you know, we're not going to keep tabling this, that's not the way it's, the process is designed. So, so again, my position will be to, most likely to agree for denying the rehearing request, but make clear that I do have reservations on a couple of, of things, just for the record.
So noted. I think with that, I'll hazard a motion. I'm going to make a motion to deny the rehearing request at 122 Manchester Street. I make the motion by summarizing the four questions, in that I don't believe there was a procedural error, I, I, I think, I don't believe it was an illegal decision that the board made. I, the, I don't believe the rehearing request contains any new information not presented or available to the board at the public hearing, and there's nothing that would, could, or would or could cause the board to make a different decision. So based on the discussion we've had on those four questions, I find, I make a motion to deny the rehearing request. Is there a second to that motion? Discussion on the motion?
I'm going to make my official statement with this vote, that I will support the denial of the rehearing request, but for the record, I will say that I have reservations and concerns about the, the topic of the illegal decision. In other words, I believe that in both couple of these items that we tick through, that there is some more definition, or more, there's some items of more definition that I believe would be pertinent, and I spent some time talking about perception, and what I believe that means to this board. Again, it is not a personal indication on, on any one of this board, it's just my feeling of, from the public view of this board. So, again, I state those items that I talked about before, and with reservation, I will go with the denial of the rehearing request, for the record.
Thank you for that. Any other discussion on the motion? Show of hands in favor of the motion of the denial, so that's unanimous, so then, so we have concluded to deny this rehearing request. And with that, I'll close the public meeting on the rehearing request at 122 Manchester Street. I don't think there's any other business before the board tonight, because we've covered it. No agenda, so I make a motion to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Boucher, all in favor. So we are adjourned at?
Eight thirty-seven.
Eight thirty-seven.